I call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, June 20. Please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Sedoti.
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Perkovic.
Here.
And Mr. Snow is absent tonight.
Mr. Snow is absent tonight. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of May 30, 2019.
So moved. Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Epstein.
We have, on the agenda tonight, we have four public hearings. The format that we're going to follow for public hearings is I'll read the caption proposal that's on our report. I'll ask the applicant to come up to the podium, spell their name, tell us their name, their address, and give us a description of the proposal. Then I'll ask if there are any proponents in the audience, those who approve the proposal and would like to come forward to speak and advocate its approval. Then I will ask if there are any opponents, those who oppose the proposal. You'll be able to approach the podium and give us your reasoning why we should not act in a affirmative matter on that proposal. And then sometimes generally, some people have just questions and want points of information. I'll allow those individuals to come up to the podium and ask your questions. Just remember, all discussions, all questions must flow through the chair. Okay? Thank you. The first item we have is a conditional use permit to allow temporary events at 1996 Lake Overlook Drive in the R2 Single Family Residential District and B2 General Business District by Mennor Hedlund's Community Center Incorporated. Is that applicant here? Please come up to the podium and identify yourself for the clerk.
My name is Warren Parks. W-A-R-R-E-N-P-A-R-K-S. I'm a trustee at the Mennor Hedlund's Community Center as well as a parade chairperson for the Mennor Hedlund's Fourth of July Parade.
Okay. Just give us a little briefing of what's involved.
Well, for the past...
For the day's activities.
Right. For the past 67 years, Mennor Hedlund's has been holding this parade without permit, but the last two years, we added music bands to play and thus requiring the permit in addition to what we've been doing over the years. So that's the purpose for the permit, is to have the sale of food trucks on premises as well as the bands that will be playing.
All right. You've been doing this for 67 years?
Yes, sir. I haven't been, no. I'm just 67. I couldn't have been doing it.
If we don't approve, we're going to break the chain. A lot of pressure on this one. Okay. Are there any proponents here tonight that would like to speak and advocate on this gentleman's behalf? Hearing none. Are there any opponents, anyone who does not want to see this parade happen this year? All right. Any questions for the applicants? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Ms. Mitchell, any comments from the administration?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman, other than the conditions that are noted in the CUP.
Okay. Larry, any comments? Commission members, any questions for the applicant? Ms. Mitchell, over the past few years, have there been any complaints, public intoxication, police reports with regard to this event?
When we review these applications, we do take into account any comments from the Police Department and Fire Department, and they have not had any concerns that they've noted.
Okay. Great. Hearing no further questions, I'll entertain a motion. A motion for approval with the six conditions.
Second.
And Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
All right. Good luck.
Thank you.
The second item is conditional use permit to allow a commercial recreational facility at 8900 Mennor Avenue in the B2 General Business District by Grassroots Boxing Club and Mennor Corners LTD Partnership. Is that applicant here? Please come up to the podium. Identify yourself for the clerk.
Hello. My name is Adam Marino, M-A-R-I-N-O, and I'm the owner and coach of the Grassroots Boxing Club.
Okay. Give us a little description of your operation.
Sure. Simply looking to open up a facility that just offers the teaching and offers the training for the sport of boxing.
All right. Are there any proponents here tonight that would like to speak on behalf of this applicant? Are there any opponents, those who oppose this operation from opening at this particular center? Any general questions, points of information? All right. Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Ms. Mitchell, any comments from the administration?
We've noted three conditions, and I guess I would also like to ask the applicant if there will be any competitions held at the facility that might alter the parking needs for the use.
There won't be any competition there. It's strictly just for training and teaching purposes.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the commission members? All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Whomever may make the motion, I would request the condition, an additional condition relative to non-competitions. The applicant can always come back to modify the CUP if that becomes something that they want to pursue, but as Ms. Mitchell indicated, it would present some additional planning issues potentially for the city.
I've heard our counsel. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the fourth condition, the fourth being no competitions held as it impacts the parking.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
All right.
Good luck. Item number three, conditional use permit to allow an automobile repair shop at 7513 Tyler Boulevard in the M1 Light Manufacturing District by Oddball Industries and A&amp;I Venture LLC. Is that applicant here? Identify yourselves for the clerk.
My name is Scott Pace.
William Rowley.
Mr. Pace and Mr. Rowley. How do you spell your last name?
R-A-W-L-E-Y.
R-A-W-L-E-Y. Okay. Go ahead.
We're an automotive repair shop focused on just about everything. We've been four years now looking at our business from Eastlake to Mentor. The building better suits our needs and more space to expand than business.
Are there any proponents who would like to speak in behalf of these gentlemen and advocate the approval of this proposal? Identify yourself for the clerk and please spell your last name for her.
My name is Andy Strancar. I operated Northern Ohio Transmission at this facility for almost 40 years. Decided to retire. A building became available for rent, and these gentlemen expressed a wish to open their business and move their business from Eastlake to Mentor. I bought the business. I hope and wish them the best.
You're the owner of the property now?
Yes, yeah.
You're going to lease it to them or sell it to them?
Lease it to them with option to buy.
With option to buy. Very good. Very good. Okay. Are there any other proponents who would like to speak on behalf of these gentlemen? Are there any opponents, anyone who does not want to see this proposal proceed? Any questions? All right. The public hearing is closed. Ms. Mitchell, any comments?
We've noted eight conditions on the staff report. I'd like to point out that the applicants have been very forthcoming in trying to meet all of the requirements of the city. They've met with us before they even submitted their permit. The issue of, or the notation in their cover letter with regard to an outside fenced area...
Right.
We added that as a condition, and I just wanted to note that, you know, for the commission's attention, that we would like to see that that be reviewed separately. It's not a, it's, from what I understand, it's a future plan, and as you know, any outdoor storage areas, we historically would like to review those separately, so I've noted that that can't be put in until that gets your approval.
You've read all these conditions and you agree?
Yes, yes.
And you understand what she's saying? You'll have to come back?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions from the commission?
I just have one question.
Yes, Mr. Park.
What is the intended future use of this fenced-in area?
Mainly just if we have customer cars that sit outside overnight for their own safety behind a fenced-in area that's not...
We're not dealing with that, but I just wanted to know what you were going to do with that.
Yeah, that was what, yeah.
So you wouldn't be storing vehicles?
If something's like a bigger job where it's a longer fix than just a quick and outbreak job or something like that, if like a transmission or engine needs to be rebuilt, then if we need it off the lift, that basically would be stored there and then brought back in when...
Okay.
But no work would be done out there just for...
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to ask for two commitments from you in exchange for this approval. I went down and looked at the property. The property's pretty worn, you know, and I think that building needs a coat of paint and that, and your roof also is rusted out or rusted.
Yeah, we've already been addressing that.
So when do you think is a reasonable amount of time you could paint it?
When it stops raining? Yeah, when it stops raining.
So October.
Oh, yeah. At this rate, yeah, October. I actually, I put a coat of paint on part of it yesterday.
Yeah, we're already in the front.
Yeah.
So if I say six months, you're okay?
Oh, yeah. Plenty of time, yeah.
All right. And the other commitment is when you enter the property, the asphalt parking on the east end is in real bad shape.
Yep.
I'd like to see you repair it, coat it, and restripe it.
Yeah, I plan on restriping it actually already, just to make it a little better.
Six months?
Yeah, it should be fine.
All right. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion, including the painting requirement and the asphalt repair and restriping within the six-month time period.
I'll make a motion to approve with 10 conditions, the last two being the building painting and the asphalt repair and striping.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you. Good luck. All right. Item number four, rezoning of 16-plus acres from R4 Single Family Residential to RVG Village Green District and Preliminary Subdivision to create 41 residential lots at Garfield Road by Charles M. Andrews. Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Welcome.
Yes, Charles M. Andrews, 35110 Upland Avenue, Willa Beach, Ohio.
All right. Please give us a description.
Well, we attended an informal hearing, listened to all the recommendations of the Planning Commission. In addition to the recommendation of the Planning Commission, we met with the city, met with the Fire Department, listened to their recommendations and so forth. We revised our plans to meet all of the recommendations that were here to seek a preliminary approval.
Are there any proponents, anyone here tonight wants to see this zoning request be approved and would like to advocate on behalf of Mr. Andrews? Please step forward. Are there any opponents, those who oppose the zoning request change and would like to speak on behalf of the, behalf of yourself, why the commission should not consider this item? Please identify yourself and spell your name for the clerk.
Hello, my name is Andrea Mollenkamp. That's spelled M, O-E-H as in house, L-E-N as in Nancy, K-A-M as in Mary, P as in Paul. I'm a resident of Mentor at 7690 Ellie Place, and I live about 19 years.
Excuse me. Could you just get a little bit closer because you're dropping out?
Okay. Sorry. Sorry.
No, that's all right.
Okay. My concern about this development is there is a historical home on the property that was built in 1860, and we don't have many of those left here in the city of Mennor, and I would like to know what provisions are being taken to either move the property or somehow save it so it's not destroyed.
That your question?
That's my question in my opposition, I guess.
Okay. Mr. Andrews, do you care to answer that?
Sure. The house is not a historical house. It's an old house, but the structural integrity of the house is a major problem. It's, we've had it reviewed and so forth. All of the structural components of the basement are all gone. The porches are separating from the home, and it's not a feasible thing to save the home at this point. So, don't plan on preserving it.
Please, if you want to respond, address, no, through the chair, please.
I was just wondering, is there anything that the community can do in attempt to save this house? Perhaps get a petition to show there's an interest in getting the appropriate paperwork to have it designated as a historical structure or look into any possible funding that may be available to restore the structure? Is there anything that we can do at this point?
Well, you said, is there anything that the community can do? Well, the community can certainly do whatever it wants, you know, could form a coalition and move forward with an attempt to come up with some kind of a plan.
How much time do we have to get that together?
I really can't answer that, you know. I would suggest you start immediately if it's that pressing, sure.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Are there any other opponents? Gentlemen, sir, please come up to the podium.
I could probably speak to the audience.
No, no. You have to come to the podium. Give us your name and spell your last name, please, and give it...
I'm Cabot. Last name is K-A-B-A-T.
K-A-B-A-T. And your address?
7989 Eleanor. I'm sub lot seven that backs up to the property in discussion. I'm not here so much as an opponent or opposed to it. I just wonder if we're going to get more information about it. I didn't know whether to expect houses behind my property. I'm surprised to see a road. I don't know anything about the size of the houses or the lots or any of the other code requirements or conditions that'll regulate that development. I see that there's going to be like kind of turnaround road, and I'm noticing that it's coming out of Norton Parkway there, which is already a pretty busy road entering onto Garfield. Has that already been discussed or will that be an issue or discussed?
Well, we discussed it at the last meeting when Mr. Andrews was here, but he certainly, Mr. Andrews, you could step to the podium and give us a brief overview of the type of housing, the type of development that an RVG would call for that you want to put in at this location.
Well, basically, we submitted three, not the exact houses, but the types of houses. Unlike the subdivision across the street where all the houses are substantially the same, it's, the exteriors look the same, we want to pattern this subdivision after the other two subdivisions that we have, both Meloria and Belglow, where the houses are a little different so that when you go down the street, it looks nice. And this is my family's property, so we're pretty good stewards of the property. We have been over the past 30 years, and we expect to continue that with the housing that we propose for this subdivision.
Further response to the gentleman's question, a change to an RVG zoning would allow you to come in with smaller lot sizes, smaller dwellings?
The lot sizes will be slightly smaller. The half-acre subdivisions are not in this particular area with the surrounding property and so forth. They do not, they're not marketable, and we have the subdivision next door, which has been going on 15 years and still counting. Still have property to sell. So this is the size lots and houses that are demanded by the public at this time, and we have a developer that's willing to stand up and conform to our requirements in terms of very housing looks.
And it's true that the RVG zoning would permit you, permit you to increase the density.
It does slightly. There's a, I mean, RVG, you're aware, there's a little give and take. The RVG has a slightly smaller lot size, but it also has an increased area for the residents. In this case, 38% of the acreage is devoted to the common use of the residents in that subdivision, which is a benefit to them. So that's what this provides. In fact, I think the ordinance allows us 15% open area, and we're providing 38% open area.
Mr. Chairman?
Wait. Go ahead, Mr. Park.
Could you discuss the common use of this undeveloped piece of the property?
Well, hold on one second. I want to close the public hearing.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. You're right. We're not out yet.
Does that give you some additional information as to the type of development you'll see under an RVG?
You had a developer in mind.
Sir, run your question to the chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, come back to the podium.
I heard you say you had a developer who would...
Sir.
...to build according to your...
Step to the microphone and address your question to me.
Okay.
He can hear you.
I'm sorry. I'm wondering who the developer is who would be building homes. I'm wondering how big the lots are going to be. I'm wondering where the Village Green area is going to be. If I'm reading the map correctly, my lot, my sub lot, as well as my neighbors, is going to be right by the road accessing or exiting the development. How much buffer will there be between that road and our properties? Just a few other questions. How big are these houses going to be required to be? Andrews did a beautiful job on Belglow. It's probably one of the nicest streets of Mennor. Those are half-acre lots. Probably most of those houses are anywhere from $450,000 to $500,000. The images I saw of the houses being proposed don't meet that standard. So I'm just wondering what to expect in terms of the house, the size of the lot, the size of these houses? How much do you expect these houses to be sold for? Who and who's the developer? And where exactly is the Village Green area? Because aside from that one green spot right by sub lot one on Eleanor Court, I, the rest of that green area is, I don't know what that is, that's probably deep wood and some other property. Those are my questions.
Mr. Andrews, you heard his questions. They're very specific. Why don't you just go down the list and give us your response?
Village Green areas in green are the plan. All of that acreage is common to the residents. And yes, it includes woods and so forth. Definitely. That's what Village Green is. The housing will be in the 300s, 300 to, maybe the outside house would be 400, probably in the threes. So that would be a better guess. The developer, until I have a written agreement with the developer, I prefer to keep that confidential until I finalize that.
What about the size of the homes? Yes.
The size of the houses, I believe, are in our covenants. There's a, we submitted with Mennor, and it's available, I assume, it's a public record of our declarations, so you can read it, and it'll tell you exactly the size houses that, you know, because they're different sizes with, depending on the lot and so forth.
Ms. Mitchell, for the record, can you just give us a range of what is noted in the report as far as the size of the homes?
Certainly. So, well, and let me just back up just a moment just because the gentleman, the resident, had some questions. So under the current zoning, there are minimum floor area requirements for housing as is for the proposed RVG. In the R4 Single Family District, minimum size for one story is 1,500 square feet. More than one story is 1,800 square feet. In the RVG, single-family unit is 1,400 square feet, and if you were to do a duplex, which he is not proposing, 1,200 square feet. I will note, though, that the density requirement, there is a maximum number of units per acre, which is 2.5. So, you know, I think sometimes what is maybe a little bit harder to grasp is the fact that there's a, there's a density that has to be met, but the size of the lots may be smaller because of the accommodation for the open space. So in this instance, we calculated 32% open space. I think Strange just said it's a 38, but we have 32% or 5.17 acres total. The requirement minimum is, for the RVG, is 15%, which would have been 2.4 acres.
So it exceeds...
So it's exceeding that. The three different house samples, the renderings that we have, the smallest is 1,700 square feet, three-bedroom, and it goes as high as four-bedroom at 2,700 square feet, so all of which are well above the minimums that are within the code.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to speak? Ma'am, please come up. State your name for the clerk and spell your last name, please.
My name is Karen Jenkins, J-E-N-K-I-N-S, and I'm not sure if this is going to make a difference, but I just feel that Mennor's history is disappearing very quickly, and I don't know how you can say a Civil War-era house is not considered a historical house. I mean, that's something that is just disappearing from our city, and I think it's important that we preserve our past, and I just don't think the city should approve a plan that just calls for tearing down such an amazing structure, and I was wondering if they could provide the actual studies that were done to show that there were structural problems? I mean, I feel like it would be very easy for someone to say, "Oh, it's crumbling. We have to tear it down," when they just want to get it, get it gone so they can move ahead with their project. So I just wanted to voice my opposition.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
In response to her question, Mr. Andrews, what steps has your group taken to reach the conclusion that that property should be demolished?
Well, we've been in the construction and development business for over 40 years, so we're able to determine when we look at a building whether it's structurally sound or not sound. We have over almost 2 million square feet of buildings around Cleveland and so forth, so we're pretty, pretty, we know what buildings are sound and what buildings aren't sound, and we know what it would take to fix a building and what so forth.
Have you looked at the possibility of saving that structure and incorporating it into your proposed development?
It wouldn't be feasible to propose it into this development. It's just not workable.
Is the property in that bad a shape that it couldn't be moved? I only asked that question because that was a question of one of the residents.
Right. It's not a movable structure. It's a... It's, if you had a movable structure, you'd have to have a flat piece of land with a structure that could be lifted and moved. This is built over a hill, so it doesn't lend itself to a.
Is that structure occupied today?
It is not. It's, we can't have it occupied.
How long has it been vacant?
Years or so, maybe a little less. The porches are falling off the house.
You said two years or less. Two years or less?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other opponents who would like to voice their displeasure with this request? Sir, please come to the podium. State your name, your address, and spell your last name, please.
My name is Dan Andre, A.N.D.R.E. While I'm not, I don't oppose the project, I want to voice my concerns with the project. I'm the only person in this room, the only person in the city, I'm the only person involved with the project that's directly affected by the project. As they clear out the 16 acres, there's a 700-foot run along the west end of the property. All that water drains into my backyard, every bit of it.
Do you state?
7962 Belglow Lane.
7962.
Belglow Lane. And to add to Mr. Cabot's comment, it's not a $400,000, $500,000. I have about $700,000 in my house. They're putting, and as they put the sewer line, the proposed sewer line, along that property, they'll come into my yard and tie into the sewer easement in my yard. So they'll be in my yard working. I'll receive no consideration, no compensation. I just want it to be, express my concerns again. If anything happens with this closely guarded sewer system, not only is my yard underwater, my house is underwater. Because as they clear out these 16 acres, the elevation, if you see on the topography, the elevation is 40 feet above my backyard. I go from 709 to 743. So that's 40 feet over a two-football field span that the water now comes, there's no more, there's no more nooks or crannies or trees or anything. The water comes into my backyard. And again, you look at the topography, everything comes out into, funneled into my yard. I was going to put, in my original plot land, my proposal, I have a pool in the backyard. I never, I ran out of money before I put the pool in. I think the Andrews brothers might be taking care of the pool for me here.
In-ground or above-ground? In-ground pool or above-ground?
It's an in-ground pool I wanted to put in. But anyway, I just want, again, it's, I like the common area there. Hopefully, they'll leave some of the trees and forestry that's there now. It's a beautiful site. I've got a beautiful piece of land back in the corner, a great deal of privacy. It's, I hope it doesn't turn into a little playground because I've got some bulldogs and they like to run and roam. It's, I stay in my yard, but I hope it doesn't turn into a playground. But yeah, just wanted to express my concerns about the layout, the topography, the drainage and the sewer system.
Thank you. Those are some very serious concerns. Ms. Mitchell, when the proposal would come into the city, the building, the city engineers would look at these problems with respect to drainage and filling with the proper topsoil and so on and so forth, wouldn't they?
They have looked at the initial plans. And we did note the topography change, you know, from the southeast corner to the northwest corner of the lot. And the engineer was comfortable with the proposal as it has been submitted. The gentleman that just spoke, he's in the far corner of the property and, which has a heavy amount of existing trees that, while we are asking for more information on the trees that, you know, if there are any dead or dying trees. He's in a pretty dense part of the area of the property where there's going to be tree preservation, at least that's how it's been proposed. So, but we are asking for more information on that with regard to the trees.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Are there any other, yes, please come back to the podium. Restate your name. Mrs. Jenkins.
Karen Jenkins. So I just wanted to point out that the original house was built without the two-story sleeping porches on each side. So I'm not sure, just because they're separating from the house, that that would mean the whole house is crumbling. And again, I would feel more comfortable if there was an independent appraisal, not just like, well, we've been doing this for 40 years, we know.
Meaning independent analysis.
Right. You know, just something that could confirm that. Like I said, the house was built without those porches. Obviously, it's very old. And I'm just not sure if there's some separation that it means the whole house has to come down. And also, as far as it not being able to be moved, there are companies, one that I was looking at today, they recently moved a 1,750-foot, 50-ton, five-story hotel. They were able to move that. So, I mean, that's huge. And I would think if they can overcome and do something that monumental, that they could deal with a little bit of an elevation change. So I just wanted to make those points. And then also, I wanted to know, if you do approve this today, is that just carte blanche that, okay, we're going to go, we can just tear down this house? I mean, obviously, I'm assuming there would be a demolition permit that would be needed. I don't know. But I'm just wondering if, if you approve this today, does that mean there's no hope for this house?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
In response to your one question, yes, definitely, a demolition permit needs to be pulled before a contractor can demolish that property. Ms. Mitchell, do you have any response to her other concerns?
Well, procedurally, you have to make a recommendation up to council, and council then would also hold a public hearing, and they would take final action on the project.
You heard Ms. Mitchell's response. So it doesn't just end here today. It'll go to city council, another public hearing, additional comments, and then from there it'll go forward. All right. Are there any other opponents? State your name, spell your last name for the clerk.
My name's Robert Stratman, S.T.R.A.T.M.A.N. I reside at 7982 Belglow Lane, which if you went to the north, I'm on Sub Lot 13. It abuts the property. I don't know whether I'm really opposed or not at this point. I was originally because we bought, they're significantly more expensive than $700,000 home in there that I have. There were deed restrictions that required it to be greater than 2,800 square feet. It was on a half-acre lot. You had to have a side entry garage. You had to meet all those deed restrictions. And originally, when I saw this plan, there was going to be walking paths behind my property when the first proposal. When we bought the property, it was zoned, R4, which we bought, and it was zoned, I believe, R4 behind there. It was going to be residential. And if I'd have known we were going to turn it into something with parks and walking paths behind my house, I'd have never bought it. I could have bought it a lot over in Newell Creek at that time for that kind of an environment, if that's what I wanted. If, if we're going to keep this plan, I'm not nearly as opposed. My questions, my first question to you, Mr. Chairman, is the green area, what, who owns it and what restrictions are on it? I'd hate to see this approved, and the next thing that happens is all those trees get whacked down and we end up with a path right on the backside of my property, which is not what I expected when I bought the lot.
Mr. Andrews, you want to speak to the structure of this subdivision, meaning will there be a homeowners' association responsible for the green area?
Yes, there's a homeowners' association that is the actual, will be the. Excuse me. We submitted a tree preservation plan. So actually, by having this zoning, a half-acre zoning, you'll have more trees than you would if there were a half-acre lot. If there were a half-acre lot, someone could build a house, remove all the trees, and literally wouldn't be any trees. By having this type of an arrangement, there's literally going to be trees there for, as part of the tree preservation plan, which we submitted. So it should help.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I still haven't heard that, when you say a tree preservation plan, I don't know what that means. To me, if there's five or six big trees, they can knock everything else down. I don't understand why. I mean, I understand the concept of tree preservation, but what limitations?
Sir, speak in the microphone, so.
I don't, I understand the concept of tree preservation. What I don't know is what does it mean in practice? Does it mean there's five big trees and you have to save those and everything else can get leveled? And what's to prevent the homeowners' association from deciding? It would really be nice to put a walking path through that tree area, which would end up on the backside of our property. I still haven't heard that addressed.
Okay. Mr. Andrews, give us an overview of the tree preservation plan that you prepared and submitted to the planning department.
Well, here's a drawing of it showing the tree preservation area. The, in terms of a walking path that would subsequently be approved or whatever, I believe that the homeowner association would have to come in for a permit for that. So any concerns, pro and con at that time, if there was one.
With this proposal in front of us today, there is no walking path.
No, I removed it.
And a walking path would have to be part of the proposal and approved by both the planning commission and city council.
Right.
So tonight, there is no walking path.
Right. I removed it because of the comments of our informal.
Ms. Mitchell?
If you just note there, if you kind of see those wiggly lines there, that is, are the limits of the preservation area. The sewer easement, which is along the border, is not part of that preservation because it's part of the sewer easement. So that won't be protected per se. But the rest of the area is proposed to be protected at this time.
And there's no plans to, in this common area, this open space area, I see nothing for picnic tables, gazebos, benches, there's no, so what amenities, what's going to draw the residents to this open space if it's just open space?
Well, I mean, some of the use of the open space is up to the residents pursuant to their deed of declarations and so forth. That tells them what they can or can't do in the area. And then over top of that is the Mennor City ordinances. And of course, if they wanted to do something subsequently, they would have to comply with not only the deed of declarations, but they'd have to comply also with the ordinances.
Ms. Mitchell, down the road, if they wanted to propose activities within this open space, they would have to come back to the planning commission and receive our approval.
Correct.
Chair, I'm still confused by what is the green area. Does that, that whole green area, is that, is that the tree preservation area?
Well, the green area is your open space area that's required in a RVG district.
Okay. I understand that. So what are the?
There's an area that looks like here.
Correct.
And there, and then back. And this area is the tree preservation area.
So how far, does it go east of that sewer easement or not?
No.
No.
So behind, so to the east of that sewer easement, they could clear out everything?
Correct. It looks like there's a detention pond in that area.
There is a detention pond, and the, and the planning commission could also put stipulations on it that it not be cleared.
Where is the retention pond going to be, Mr. Chairman?
Larry, can you put that up and show them? Move that down a little bit. That's where they're going to install, propose to install, the detention basin on the northern border of this development.
Well, if you swing up just a little bit to the north, I believe that's on the back edge of my property. I'm in Sub Lot 13, on Belglow Lane.
So you're, you're actually still part of the area that's, yeah, see where 13 is?
Right.
That's where the detention is, where he's.
Right there is going to be a retention pond?
Yes, it's shown on that map you were showing.
So to the west of that easement, then, the tree preservation kicks in?
Yes. Except for the, yeah, except for the sewer easement that's showing there along the property line.
That's outside.
Which is.
The preservation area.
Yeah.
Right.
So behind my property, then, it's going to be cleared away for a sewer line easement?
Well, only to the extent that, it's a temporary.
Mr. Andrews, speak in the microphone, please. No, speak in the microphone.
That's only a temporary disruption of that area, just long enough to connect the sewer. And also, to answer the other gentleman's question, when we built Belglow, we put the sewer, we oversize the sewer in anticipation of developing the property. And we ran the sewer line into our property so that we won't be disrupting any of the residents on Belglow when we connect the sewer. It'll be connected entirely on our property.
And this is additional, it was in the corner down here, was additional open space you were incorporating into the development?
Yes.
So what is the purpose of the retention basin? Because right now on my property, like the other gentleman mentioned, my sump pump's running every 30 seconds right now. Every 30 seconds it pumps out right now. So I'm concerned that we're going to strip away the land's ability to absorb what little water it seems to be absorbing. Are we going to lower the hill or are we going to make it more steep? You know, right now, I'm almost at the point I have to put a second sump pump in my basement because of the amount of water that's draining into my yard right now.
The drainage system for the subdivision is designed by the engineer who submits all the design work to the city of Mennor. That'll be reviewed and so forth, and the idea is to retain all the water that this subdivision creates on that subdivision so that it doesn't flow off that subdivision any faster than it would naturally flow off. So in other words, it's, it won't create an additional problem. Actually, it probably will decrease the amount of water that comes into your property naturally because it'll be held in that. And then from there, it'll go through a pipe into the storm sewer system, which will go.
I mean, these plans, once submitted, the safety valve is our city engineer and his staff. And if they're not satisfied that there aren't going to be additional problems, it won't be approved. It has to meet the code and has to meet the approval of our engineers. So, you know.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. It's just that a lot of this information wasn't available to us as homeowners. And I'm still concerned about not having the whole area behind my lot suddenly cleared out after I bought it thinking it'd be residential behind me. But I don't want to repeat myself. I understand retention ponds, I understand all that. I'm an engineer. I get it. But, okay. I don't have anything further to add.
Mr. Andrews, when you were putting together this proposal, did you attempt to meet with the residents on Eleanor and Belglow and all the streets in there to discuss your development?
We did not. We met with the city informally. We met with the police department, the city departments and so forth. And we put up a notice of the subdivision, and nobody's contacted us. So, I don't know.
You know, technically, yeah, meeting with all the appropriate city officials is very important.
Right.
But, you know, meeting with the residents in that area who are going to be impacted by this development, I wouldn't just put up a sign and hope they're going to call me. I would reach out to them. Let's have some discussions and maybe people here tonight or the residents that came tonight and the residents who didn't would be more educated as to what's going. as to what's going on. There's a lot of apprehension, and I, I don't blame them. Because if I lived there, I would be apprehensive too. All right, if they're, for the record, the city received six written objections, with one being from Ms. Jenkins, as to this change of zoning. And the common denominator amongst those letters was the historic preservation and the significance of that structure. They were very passionate, very articulate. So those, let that be noted for the record. Those letters are on file, and if anybody wants to avail themselves to look at those letters, just follow the procedures for making a public records request, and we'll certainly work with you. Okay? All right, are there any, I think we had the questions. I'm going to close the public hearing. Ms. Mitchell, do you want to further elaborate, or do you want me to open it up to questions for the commission?
Go ahead.
All right. Members of the commission, Mr. Varga.
Yeah, I had a question. Part of the reason that this village green zoning exists is to allow for some flexibility with the development of property, but it is also supposed to provide a benefit to the subdivision's members, provide some value to them, additional value.
One time twice.
Because the lots are smaller, some of the activities and things that you would do in your yard, or your expectation of life, is moved to some common space where some amenities are. We're not talking about walking paths behind people's houses. I appreciate that they're not there, because that was my comment the last time. But there are no other amenities. So even though we have some space that's not developed, we also are not providing any additional amenity for the people who have the smaller lots. There's some space at the front, and there's space behind some of the other houses, there's a detention pond. There's only one area in the corner, which is, looks like it's being preserved for, for trees, but there's no additional amenity for the people who would live here. Could you speak to that?
Well, we eliminated the amenities because of the informal hearing that we had with the planning commission. They didn't seem to want them, so we removed them.
Then I think maybe the comments were misunderstood. We didn't want people walking behind people's houses as an amenity.
Okay.
That, that provided no amenity to the people who live there and the people who walk by. But part of the, part of the issue is to create, as the, as the name of the zoning is, a village green, is to create a common space for the activities of life, recreational, you know, that, that no longer can actually take place in the smaller lots. So we're trying to, you know, there's some communal areas where people can have picnics, have, have some recreation experience, someplace for children to play, since there's, their lots are now small and they don't have that opportunity. So I think maybe our comments were misconstrued or misunderstood, that one of the requirements, in my opinion, for this zoning is to have that useful communal place. Restating again, walking behind someone's house is not a recreational or, you know, recreational experience, so...
That's all. Other members of the commission, would you like to speak?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cicero.
I do believe there's a place for RVG zoning within the city. But I also believe, when you look at this area, and I believe you've developed, you have some very nice developments around this. And I, I just don't believe the RVG zoning fits what you've already created in this neighborhood. I would much rather see you stay with the existing zoning and develop, and create a nice development similar to what you've developed. And then, what we have here is a very nice area of Mentor. All these, each development goes with each other. I, I believe if we did an RVG here and we were putting homes on quarter acre, third acre lots, it just, it takes away from what you've already developed. I just, I struggle with how this is going to fit, this zoning with whatever, everything else around it.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Petroff.
I have just another comment about the RVG as well, notwithstanding the two other comments from the members. In this case, too, the RVG typically is allowed increased density when they're, for example, working around certain topography that is there, such as the slopes and so forth. And in this case, to me, this, this street configuration really looks like we're not taking any of that into account, and we're really just obliterating what trees there are on this without taking anything into account, but only leaving what's left over just to meet this open space requirement. So in that respect, I don't like it as well either. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Hold on, hold on.
All right.
I propose that we vote on this with the six proposed conditions.
So that's a motion to approve subject to six conditions?
Six conditions.
All right, I hear a second.
A second.
All right.
Mr. Sedoti.
No.
Mr. Tiedemann.
No.
Mr. Varga.
No.
Mr. Cicero.
No.
Mr. Cook.
No.
Mr. Perkovic.
No.
Mr. Chairman, while it, we'll go to the city council with a negative recommendation. If the commission would care to state any findings for the benefit of the record, it's not necessary. Again, it'll go up to city council with a negative recommendation, but to the extent any commission members want to add additional feedback other than what you've already expressed, and now would be appropriate a time to make the record in that regard. Thank you, sir.
Would the commission like to do that?
Yes, sure.
All right. My vote is no, because I believe that this RVG designation on this 16 acres would drastically alter the character of the existing neighborhood. And I don't see enough positive benefits to override that and let us go forward to disturb the character of this neighborhood. Number two, you have to consider the, the investment that the current residents have put in there. And when they move there, they move there for a reason, for the bigger lot, the nicer, spacious homes, et cetera. And if we were to just allow that 16 acres to be carved out and we put in the RVG, you know, in my opinion, I think we're selling them out, and I couldn't live with that.
Tiedemann.
Mr. Tiedemann.
It's surrounded by R4 on all sides, and I think that's the way it should stand there. I don't think the RVG fits in to the plans of that area.
Mr. Varga.
I feel strongly that the, as a planning commission, we are to carry out thoughtful plans, and changing the zoning and making this almost, a separate zoning from all the adjacent zoning does not follow a good plan. And the fact that there's not enough reason within the proposed RVG plan to override that. There's not enough benefit to the community, and so I think we're creating a situation, we would create a situation where there'd be a lot of, talk about market, market conflict between the people who are there and invested and the people who would be coming in later. Yeah, that's it.
Mrs. Cicero.
I think I made my feeling clear, but just, I had one thing on Mr. Varga's point. I think when we look at RVG and we talk about the benefit to the community, it's not just for the homes you're bringing to the community. I think it's for everybody around it, and I don't see that happening here.
Mr. Cook.
I mean, I'm on, I'm on board with all the members, and the proposed RVG development is just not consistent with the neighboring R4 developments.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes, and I was, and not sold on the, this RVG in this particular circumstance was thought through, and the amenities that we typically would see weren't there as well. So changing the zoning really, to my mind, wasn't a benefit at all.
Mr. Chairman, I just had one other comment, and it's mostly for the benefit of some of the folks that came tonight. Our decision here has nothing to do with the old house. It, it, you know, if, if people are interested in, in historic architecture, they need, they need to activate, they need to organize and do whatever they want to express themselves and get involved with these kinds of situations. So this property is, may remain, may remain R4. Has every possibility and right to develop it as an R4 subdivision. So I just want people to know that, you know, if you have that interest in the community, you need to get ahead of some of these situations and, and organize, or, you know, I mean, he's got every right to do whatever he wants with his property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you. I would like to correct one thing, where this gentleman indicated that the property was surrounded by R4. That is incorrect.
Okay.
It's surrounded on two sides by R4. The back half of the property is, has the deep woods banner over the entire length of the property. On the other side of the property, there's approximately 200 homes of RVG, and the next part of the property, there's business zoning, and the next part of the property, there's a factory building. So I don't like the property to be mischaracterized, that it's surrounded by R4 zoning. It is not.
I apologize.
Just so you know.
Yep.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, moving on. New business, item number five. Miscellaneous review to transfer a conditional use permit to allow outside dining and/or drinking at an existing patio at 9552 Mentor Avenue in the B2 General Business District by the Indian Kitchen and Ohio Unit Group LLC. Is that applicant here? Please state your names, spell your last names.
My name is Haridik Prajapati. My first name, H-A-R-D-I-K.
Spell your last name slowly, please.
P-R-A-J-A-P-A-T-I, Prajapati.
Did you get that? Okay, sir.
Yeah, my name is Pramod Jayshwal. I have a restaurant in Chesterland.
No, spell, spell your name.
Oh, my name is Pramod Jayshwal, P-R-A-M-O-D-J-A-I-S-A-W-A-L. My nickname is Kumar. K-U-M-A-R.
Okay. Go ahead, proceed, the floor is yours.
Have we opened the Indian Kitchen restaurant on the, before their Qdoba? And we're gonna, we have patio over there, we're gonna put the three tables outside in the patio.
When do you anticipate the open?
Second or third week.
All right. You did a nice job on the resurfacing of that parking lot and the restriping. That looks good.
Thank you.
Who installed those concrete car stops around your property?
They called north.
Oh, I, I, I think the back of the building owner, I think they did that.
The, the commercial owner of the other property? Okay. I think that's a good idea, because it delineates your property from there, and it stops people from just coming from their parking lot into your, is more control. I like that. I noticed that the eastern wall of your property can use some paint. And, I mean, if you're going to paint the eastern wall, you may want to freshen up all the walls.
Oh, yeah.
But that eastern wall can use some cleaning up.
Yeah.
So can you consider going in there, painting it?
Yeah.
All right. And your dumpster enclosure needs repair.
Repair, yes.
And then, painting once you repair it.
Okay.
And I want the debris located in the rear of your building by your back door, and the debris behind dumpster enclosure, I want that all removed.
Okay.
All right? Okay. Any questions?
Did you say three tables or five tables?
Three tables.
Because all the plans show five tables.
The existing plans for the Qdoba, there wasn't...
Qdoba, they have five. Probably gonna put...
Oh, so you're...
Yeah.
No, because this plan shows five tables, too.
Right, but that was the existing plan for Qdoba.
So they're taking those out and they're putting in three tables. All right, thank you for the clarification.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. A motion for approval with the six conditions.
Second.
Second.
Madam Court.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, good luck.
Can't wait.
Number six. Architectural review reimagining of a commercial building at 8,000 Plaza Boulevard in the B2 General Business District by Onyx Creative and DFG Mentor Erie Commons LLC. Gentlemen, floor is yours, please give us your names.
Jack Ventamilia, representing Shop 1 and DFG Erie Commons.
I spell your last name.
Last name is V as in Victor, E as in Nicholas, T as in Tony, I, M as in Michael, I, G-L-I-A.
Sir?
Name is John Quinn from Onyx Creative, Q-U-I-N-N.
All right. Give us an overview of the project.
Joann's is rebranding their brand across the country, and this is the, their look that they're going for. They did a study, and they felt that they needed to rebrand, and they've got a flagship down in Columbus with this green backer, and they've started to facilitate putting this in across the country as leases come up and stuff like that for their existing facilities. And for new buildings, this is their new prototype that they're going for. So in this case, we're trying to bring this image to this shopping center and make it feel more a, a true anchor to the center, as opposed to just being another store in the center. That's why we're kind of separating it out. The green backer, I know there's some objection with that, with the sign, you know, trying to implement that as part of the sign, and I just kind of question that because, you know, just because it's a different color, I don't know if that necessarily deemed as part of the sign, similar to the Best Buy with their triangle, or Round 1 across the street with their red backer for their sign, 5 Below with their blue backer, et cetera. So, again, you know, we're here on behalf of Joann's to implement their prototype, and this is where we feel it belongs.
And furthermore, I want to, I want to add that, whereas this is not the exact Joann prototype, what we're providing from the prototype is the green backer. I want to, I want to let know, as part of the at-home approval, lease approval, Joann has restrictions against that, and in order to bring in at-home, Shop 1 offered Joann a facade improvement.
So again, if, if Larry could back up, I think, one page or two pages in here, that'll actually give you the prototype. That's the prototype that they've done. Their flagship store that they did down in Columbus, can you give that to Larry?
Actually, who?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Can we have the camera?
All right. That's the flagship store that they did down in Columbus Easton with the green backer and white trim, again, rebranding their image, trying to bring it out from Joann Fabrics of Old, trying to bring it to the new age.
Okay.
And I've got a couple other images of some of the other stores that they've rebranded. And that's, again, we don't have a lot of examples, because it is new. This is a new thing for them. And we're just kind of putting it everywhere.
Ms. Mitchell, in reading the staff report, I noted the recommendations of the administration starting with the fact that we may consider that green and the lettering as one sign, and it may be in violation of 1171-18 of the Mentor Code. The fact that we feel there isn't much consistency to what we already approved with at-home, and there should be, or there needs to be, a little bit more cohesiveness for this plaza. Was any attempt... Was any attempt made by the applicant to meet with the planning commission, not the planning commission, the administration, knowing that we were in the process of looking at the overall plaza and trying to come up with a very acceptable facade before they submitted it to us, to the city?
I guess, I thought your question was to him, but no, I mean, I know he spoke with Larry.
Okay, Larry, you can address the question.
He spoke to me on the day before the deadline concerning this request, and I told him I was concerned about the green and the look, and that we, in the past, have looked at, recently looked at these backers that are a corporate color to be part of the sign package, such as what we viewed over at Gabriel Brothers when they went from Gabriel Brothers to Gabe's.
I remember that. So we have precedent on that?
Correct.
Okay. And elaborate a little bit on what you commented in the staff report about the colors of the columns and the parapet, and it just seems to be where there's some missing, there's something missing here in what we were already...
You know, and as you know, sometimes when we get these renderings, sometimes the colors may be a little off, but we felt that the columns weren't matching as clearly to the columns that were already in the plaza. So we just noted some concerns with that and wanted to see some consistency with regard to basically the color choices. We also noted the roof line was significantly different. You can see where on the red adjacent to that, it looks, it's a more pronounced roof line, the cornice, if you will, and which is being removed as part of the new proposal, which again, looks to be at least in terms of the renderings we received, different and inconsistent with the colors and character of the existing building. Not to say that, you know, the proposals that we've seen recently, they all have different designs and updated designs, but, you know, I think, as you know, we've worked with a lot of them to try and create that cohesiveness, as you talked about, so that it wasn't such a stark difference with each unit.
And just to say, as we've gone through this, and even with the at-home redevelopment, we're kind of moving away from that cornice feature as we move along with new redevelopment. This fits in the same fashion as the at-home would be without a cornice.
Members of the commission, comments?
Mr. Varga? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I appreciate corporate standards, but the corporate standards don't necessarily take into consideration the red roofs on both sides. It's pretty hard to live with. It's just a horrible clashing of colors with the red roofs and the details of the walkway on both sides and the cornices that remained and this massive green, setting aside the sign aspect of it. So it's my opinion that we need to go to Plan B. And Plan B was brought to my attention. Golden Gate. I know you probably don't want to hear that, but...
We did that center as well, so...
Well, there's a lot of things about this that make it a lot easier to take.
Of course. We, you know, in that case, we redid the entire center, and in that case, we had some mandates that we had to have certain backers for all the signs for all the different tenants.
Well, my biggest concern is material and color. And the color is a no-go. I don't know how you put that green next to the red roof. That's too much. It's too much for me. And I'll let it go at that. I'll wait for the discussions.
I agree with Mr. Varga. The colors just clash. We have this opportunity, I think, right now with some of the stores changing over, to really make the shopping plaza have a different, newer look, and I just think we're gonna start clashing everything that goes in there. And just with what we have today, right now, with the green and red, it just doesn't work.
Let me just, I'm interrupting. Is there any consideration of replacing or changing the red roofs?
At this time, at this time, no, but we're looking in the different avenues of funding to make several improvements to the center as we go along. But we've been in discussion with Kevin Malachek and are looking at various TIF opportunities and whatnot, so that's being studied currently, but it's not a definite avenue at this point.
I understand. I think in this case, with these adjacencies and the clash of colors, that you may want to raise the importance of those discussions. Thank you.
Yeah, just to bring the point, you know, I understand the red and I understand the clash. That was why we tried to bring that element out and separate it from the red awning instead of having it continuously through like it does today. If Larry went back to the original, as it is today, go back to the photograph, you know, this is definitely, you know, everything here has got to be, it's got to be all together. And the rendering, what we're trying to do is we're trying to bring that out, trying to separate it a little bit from the red, knowing that some way down the road, that red awning is probably gonna go away. And I think that it's gonna take, you know, some additional things like this, Joann's being able to bring their facade forward, that we can actually bring other tenants to the center and actually start to change the entire center. Hard to do it with just one tenant. It starts building after that. And it's unfortunate we don't have the opportunity here like we did at Golden Gate, because Golden Gate, we did the entire thing at once. We went through everything with all the signs and everything. Everything had to be part of the cohesive design, and here, unfortunately, we don't have the funding to do that, so we're trying to do it one at a time.
Additional comments?
I have one more question.
Sure, go ahead.
The question about the green backer and the sign color being part of the sign. You said that Gabe's was considered part of the sign. Was Round One across the street considered part of the sign? Because they have a red backer on their sign. They have a red trim on their building. I'm just kind of questioning, does that clash with the mall? Because, I mean, it's just, it's their own little accents there, and I just wondered if their red backer was considered part of their sign.
Ms. Mitchell?
I guess I'd like to ask the Law Department to comment on the sign aspect of it.
Okay. Mr. Zim?
Sure. I think one of the things we have to take a look at is setting aside color, it's how the color's being used. Let's take a look at the prototype that Joann has submitted. Finance there, Larry can bring that up. Prototype. There you go. In terms of its treatment and the light green, you can see it fully encompasses that major design element of the store. Now, whether or not light green complies with a community, be it Mentor and other cities' design guidelines, that's a separate question. Some communities may say this is a little too neonish. They may require a palette that goes more towards earth tones, for example. So those are separate issues. But you can see where here it encompasses the complete design feature of the prototype. It's a little bit easier to distinguish, you know, that treatment from what's being proposed here at this shopping center, where it basically just serves apparently to accent the sign. It doesn't take up entirely of any design element. It's not distinguished from anything. It seems pretty clearly intended to function as a billboard for the Joann signage. So in the sign code, we actually deal with that issue. And so for computation of the area of signs, what you look at is any material or color forming an integral part of the background of the sign or used to differentiate the sign from the backdrop or structure against it is placed. And so that seems to be where this application of this color, it doesn't have to be, you know, light green, it could be, you know, purple or what have you. It seems like that's exactly what it's doing, is just being utilized to differentiate that area from the rest of the building. Because again, as I think this commission has already indicated, this is just, this tenant space is just part of a much larger structure, and it bears no relationship, apparently, to any of those design elements. It's just gonna be on its own. Now, is there some, and again, setting aside the light green color, if there was some proposal utilizing color as we saw in the prototype design where it's integral to a major design element, then I think it's start seeing where it's not just in service of the sign. But this seems to be purely in service of the sign. And frankly, I think it's been acknowledged that that's the intent, so that members of the public immediately identify this as a Joann store by use of this color in conjunction with the sign. So, call it loophole management, but...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga? Hold on one second. Ms. Mitchell, do you have anything further?
No, he covered it great.
Yeah, Mr. Varga?
You did discuss that very accurately. Going back to your prototype, you use these large areas of natural-looking material to isolate that central element of green from whatever's next to it.
Right.
And then even beyond that, there's a pier of some type, a white pier that is also separating it from whatever's next to it on either side. So though I can appreciate what's being done in the prototype to handle that large amount of green relative to whatever's next to it, that's not happening with this application. And in fact, just the opposite is happening. We've got a component next to it that is in direct clash with this rather than a neutralizing effect, so...
All right. So based on that, I ask the question. So right now, it would be considered part of the sign, and if I made that entire element green, as green as the prototype, it would not be considered part of the sign?
Not necessarily. I mean, again, it serves the, well, then you're still getting the architectural approval. As of now, it, again, it seems to just enhance the sign. Again, using a prototype as an example, because we see some differentiation between that architectural element and the two sort of wings that come off of that, utilizing that different material. It doesn't have to be light green, say, you know, some other color, beige or what have you. You could see that that design, that element of that structure exists independent of the color. Here, you're utilizing color just to accent the sign, and that's where the sign code kind of kicks in. I don't have a solution to the issue because obviously this isn't a true reimagining. It looks like, for the most part, you're just, you know, taking off the cornice and painting. And I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that, but I don't know if this is a true reimagining as much as a, you know, putting on a new coat of paint. I think part of the planning commission's concern, as they've expressed, is how does reimagining the specific tenant space fit into an overall picture? Because unlike your prototype, it's not a standalone building. Unlike Round One, which is connected to the mall, but it's a standalone building for all intents purposes from an architectural standpoint, how does this, what's the plan, I guess, is what the commission may be asking. I'll just sort of summarize it like that. If the other tenant spaces are ultimately going to be reimagined into what? I think perhaps the planning commission had a little bit more confidence relative to how to reimagine this tenant space if they knew what the plan was moving forward and how that would orient then to the other tenant spaces, because otherwise it becomes very ad hoc, and approval for Joann may run into some problems, you know, for approval for another tenant space under the same issues, because there's such a massive clash between what these companies want for corporate branding and what the city's architectural and design guidelines call for, which is that, you know, the exterior elements and the colors that are used are sensitive to surrounding areas and sensitive to surrounding buildings. So again, it's, I don't know what the solution is to it. I understand that this is a limited fund, you know, the funds for this reimagining are fairly limited, but, you know, we've already, generally, the planning commission is looking at this as a singular structure and wants to see how it's going to be, not just when Joann is done, but perhaps when, you know, when other tenant spaces are reimagined as well. If that's accurate. I don't mean to speak for the commission.
That's accurate.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
I guess, I'm trying to find a path, okay? And I guess when I look at the prototype, there's a number of components, a number of colors, and there's some form to it, the nature of the entry, the nature of the side panels, the columns. And right now, all we're getting is the green and everything that's there. And I guess, I can't solve this for you because I really don't know what the solution is, but the fact that you have a prototype with established components, it would be nice if more of those components were a part of the proposal, and then we could see its more complete effect on this location. So right now, all we're really getting is the green.
I understand completely, and that's the, kind of the issue that we have, too, because, you know, we are tied to that canopy. And, you know, if this was a typical shopping center where we didn't have the canopy, that we didn't have this tying in tenant to tenant, you know, we could actually do a lot more at prototype. But since we have that canopy, we're kind of married to that for now.
I understand the problem. I'm an architect. I understand the problem. I understand that because of other concerns, you went a different way here, and I'm not saying this is the solution either. This town loves brick and stone, wood accents. There may be some, something here in the path as to how you solve this. I don't know how you solve it right now.
John, do you have any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was gonna just say that if we use the Golden Gate renovation as an example, I think that in this case, if the Joann was not allowed or can't remove the canopies and so forth at this time, I think that instead of the green, you know, if we were to pull in some of the colors, for example, of the new building that we just approved to the right, as a background that would still match some of the colors such as the beige, whether it would be a darker color or that to give the background, but yet still match the existing colors, and then use the Joann green on the lettering, much like the Golden Gate submission, that might be the lesser of some of the evils. But again, without seeing some of the other tenant spaces tied in with this rendering, you know, it's a very tough sell to just apply this Joann green into this existing structure.
Thank you. Brian, you have any comments? No? Rich? Okay. Given this is the center of Mentor's retail area, and Plaza Boulevard is heavily traveled, and we have a chance now to transform this plaza, this center, so it's gonna take some diligent work and some thinking. It's, I know it's a hard task. I'd like to recommend that we table this tonight, and you get together with our planning department and sit down and see if you can't move it a little bit further to what we're looking for and bring it back. And if you do this expeditiously, you can bring it back in time for the next meeting, which is July...
July 11.
Sorry?
July 11.
July 11. And we can, you know, maybe move it forward at that time. Does that sound okay?
Sounds great.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to table.
Motion to table.
Second.
Madam Court?
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Koch.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, good luck. Moving along here, we've got the code amendments that Ms. Mitchell and her staff have worked so hard on, and all the changes that we've received over this past week, you know, seem to be even refining it further. And I saw the latest change about the two types of residences within that certain area. I appreciate you taking into consideration the issue I raised on sustainability. I think you really have a great document here, and I'm speaking for myself, but I think the commission's ready to, let's move this forward. Would you like to add some comments to it?
No, I, just hopefully, I... No, I, just hopefully, I know I sent this yesterday in the afternoon. I hope everyone had an opportunity to read the email I sent with regard to outlining the additional changes that we made following the last work session. And, you know, we did give them a lot of thought. We did meet internally and discussed a lot of these at length, and so we feel pretty good about the request. I actually was speaking with the chief building official today. He really likes the design guidelines, and he was like, you know, his comment to me is, why aren't we applying these everywhere? So, you know, if we get these moving forward, which was obviously the original request of council, and we can get these in place, that might be something that could be applied in, to, you know, other developments as well.
Right, right. Good, thank you. Great job. Commission members, are we prepared to move this forward?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Perkovic.
I have one comment, and I think unfortunately, I might have been the one that muddied up the works here.
Oh.
On page 14, this is the current draft, on page 14 and 15, where it was one of my comments, that we typically don't view a house or a structure from perpendicular street straight on, like in a two-dimensional form. We see it slightly askew. We see it in third dimension. And I see where some of that wording tried to make it into the sentence structure, that how you're calculating the percentage of masonry and so forth. But in the particular circumstance, it says, "as calculated when viewed from an angle perpendicular to the street." So I think those two words in the same sentence maybe just need to be reworked slightly so that it doesn't, you know, to the layperson that's reading this, confuse them even further. But I do appreciate trying to take my comments into the draft here.
I guess, would you offer any other suggestions?
If you took out "from an angle," it probably works. When viewed perpendicular to the street, doesn't it, Joe?
Well, I think that was actually the, the original intent was stated perpendicular, that that, you know, in a sense, means two-dimensional. We typically see things from the angle or in third dimension, you know. So if we take out perpendicular, slightly askew from the street, or something to that effect, I think it was just those two words in the same sentence that really were, and I think, really just starting to confuse the narrative. I think that was really my only concern.
I always think about when you're looking at a building, it's 30 degrees as you're approaching it and 30 degrees as you're leaving it. I don't know how you get that into the language, but it's not just the perpendicular street. You see it as you're approaching, you see it as you leave. There's some angle of visibility. I don't want to make it more complex, you know, but I'm just saying, there's something like that. So it's not 90 degrees. It's a coming and going angle of vision. 30 degrees is a good...
Well, it might also be, it might also be that, you know, if it was reworded in such a fact that whatever surfaces, whether they're perpendicular or not to the front elevation, that, you know, essentially a butt hit, those would be counted as well as the front elevation for your calculations, that we were wanting to see some articulation on not just that front elevation, you know, even if this front elevation of the garage, for example, sticks 20 feet forward, you know, you want to count that side that's abutting or touching all of those planes.
So not just the front view, but also views from all angles as seen from the street?
Correct. Yeah. I guess it's really the surfaces that really attach those front elevation pieces as they recede into space. That's really what we're trying to get, or I'm trying to get at anyway.
So John, do you want to see the administration's modification to that?
No, no, I think it's...
Are you comfortable enough that Ms. Mitchell will incorporate it?
Yeah.
And we just move it forward?
Yeah, I think it really was just the sentence structure that said, "when viewed from an angle perpendicular street," that really was, yeah.
Okay. Kathy, you're okay with that?
Thank you.
You're okay with that?
Sure.
All right. I'll entertain a motion. Will you approve it and move forward?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
All right. I'd like to bring up one issue, and I don't want to belabor it, I just want to discuss it just very, very briefly. I saw the correspondence flying around about outside storage and sales. And I remember last year early, I had brought that up to Mr. Snow about some of the big boxes and what I was seeing, and that we had to start moving forward with enforcement if we want to be consistent with every retailer who comes forward, and there's always that possibility they want to put, you know, whatever outside, racks of clothes or mulch or whatever. It seems your response to Councilman Kirchner's memorandum, I thought, was excellent. You're stating that, you know, we are moving forward with enforcement, everybody's just got to, you know, remain calm, because this is our busy season. But as long as we're consistent, like you said, and we're moving forward, and we're notifying these individuals and making them adhere to what was approved years ago, as far as outside storage and sales, that's the way to go. Do you want to comment on that tonight, or...
Well, I just learned today that there was some additional correspondence, which I have not seen, so I can't speak to that. I guess I can, I can only address what I know that myself and code enforcement have been, I can say, very diligently following and keeping a close eye on. It is a tough item to enforce. We've made it clear, though, to the retailers that this becomes an issue year after year. And they know that, I guess, I feel like they know at this point that we are trying to stay on top of it. I mean, you know, we met with the new store director at Meyer, I mean, that, you know, it was the second week that they opened, and we walked the site, and we talked about some of the concerns. We talked about the outdoor display areas, and he wasn't aware of some of our requirements, so we made that aware, you know, to him, and he's been very cooperative. It's just, it's a tough item to enforce, and we're doing our best, and I do mean that sincerely. We don't take the concerns lightly, and we'll continue to enforce it as best we can, you know. And then it somehow, right at the end of the season, it just somehow all kind of quietly goes away, and then, you know...
Sure.
So it just, it just keeps coming up year after year, and we are looking at, you know, ways that we can improve it. It's just not a perfect system.
Right. I mean, there's obviously a tendency, on behalf of the retailers, to push the envelope.
Sure.
But as long as we are consistent with our enforcement, I think we can get it back to where it was initially approved, that there's no outside storage and sales. And once they understand that and they see that we're consistent with enforcing it, I think it will eventually resolve itself. But yes, do exactly what you're doing, let's stay on this, and I think it'll work out. Mr. Varga?
I have one other thing, not related to the last discussion. Relative to the Garfield Road project, we got a number of letters sent to the city, and not to get too specific, but one of them was addressed directly to our administrative assistant, and it was very derogatory, and I'd like it on the record that people should not pose those kinds of letters to our staff people in the city. They want to send them to us, that's fine, but I didn't appreciate the tone or the detail in the letter that was sent to the city and addressed to our, to Jess, so...
Well said.
Thank you.
Duly noted.
Thanks, Jim.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned. Thank you.